For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening. Welcome to Alpena City Council Meeting of August 7th, 2017. Call the order, please.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noack?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Wolagora?
Here.
Please rise for the plaid.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Approval of the minutes, regular session of July 17th, 2017, and closed session of July 17th, 2017. Any issues? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during a council meeting that you're allowed to address council. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
Hi, good evening. My name's Elizabeth Van Kovee at 5581 Long Rapids Road, Alpena, Michigan. And I pretty much want to ask a request as a council that you could talk with Representative Jack Bergman and have him avail himself to our community here. Recently, he came to the community and we heard about it in a rumor on Facebook. And so, he was supposed to have office hours at the library. So, my husband and I got there at 9:30 and as we came in, the librarian hung up the phone and said, "I'm sorry, he's changed his mind, he's not coming here." And so, then after we... I went home and I called his rep, our... his worker in Washington DC. And he said that he interrogated me basically, how did I hear he was coming to town? And I said, "Well, the librarian confirmed it when she said he called." And the young man said, "Well, you know, there was a shooting and he was at that." And I said, "I'm glad he wasn't shot and I understand that, but you know, if he has time to come go play baseball, he has time to come here." And this is a big, strong, tough Marine who, you know, I assume has some experience with firearms and whatnot. And you know, we're the... This is Alpena, we're the constituency... We're grandparents, for heaven's sakes, you know? And he is afraid to come and speak with us? And I resent it, I just resent it. And when his worker said... He said, "Well, you know, he was playing for charity." And I said, "Well, that's fine, but you know, charity begins at home, too. You know, you need to be here listening to what we want." He represents all of our district, even the people he disagrees with. And this was my first... I had heard a few things and I just thought, "Okay, troublemakers or people overreacting." He wouldn't... You know, he just... My husband and I are nice people and we're sane people. And we don't see the world the same way that he does, but it's important that he listen to us. And then I saw the next day in Facebook, he was out at the men's shop and he was on a boat and he met with Brig Sunson and bunches of people in Alpena. And it was... He was availing himself to the community. He canceled his office hours. And then another technique that he will do is have a town hall, like via phone contact. So, what that does is that screens the calls, the information that gets through to him. He answers what he wants to answer. And all I'm just asking is, could you please... You know, this is our constituency. You know, we're Americans and we care about one another. I mean, I don't always agree with everyone in this town, but I would never harm them and I don't think they would harm me either. You know, we just want good things to happen in our community and the world. So, I'm just hoping that maybe we could say, "Hey, look, please come and meet with our constituency here in Alpena." Thank you.
Thank you. I'll do my best to relay that message. Anyone else? All right, thank you. On the consent agenda this evening... Excuse me. A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $547,791.3. B is a black sheep pub request to close the alley and variance of noise ordinance from 10:00 PM to 2:00 AM on Saturday, August 19th, 2017. C is the designation of the city manager Greg Sundin as the voting delegate for the annual Michigan Municipal League Business Meeting held on September 13th, 2017. And D is the Thunder Bay Film Society request to use Rotary Island for Sunrise 45 Film Fest Musicians on Saturday, August 19th, 2017, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM.
Yeah, we approve that consent agenda presented.
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Wolagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. No presentations or announcements. Next is a neuro proclamation for Breastfeeding Awareness Month. Whereas the World Health Organization and UNICEF have identified breastfeeding as a global health priority since 1990, and whereas the newly formed Sunrise Side Breastfeeding Coalition's goal is to promote, protect, and support breastfeeding through community awareness and increase the awareness of the benefits and support for breastfeeding families in northeast Michigan, and to promote breastfeeding as a gold standard for optimal infant health. Now therefore, I'm Matthew J. Wolagora by virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim the month of August 2017 as Breastfeeding Awareness Month in Alpena, and encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of breastfeeding and support the efforts of the Sunrise Side Breastfeeding Coalition. This evening, we have Karen Newicki-Campo, Jessica Donakuski, and I believe Bonnie Bartsch and Sarah Hainstam. And after the photo, I want to give them an opportunity to explain the collaboration between our entities here.
And part of the thing that we noticed in our rural communities is we don't have a breastfeeding coalition, and we want to try to normalize that within our communities. So, we've teamed up with Michigan District Health Department Number Four to be able to provide a service within our communities and take community service members, anybody to join our coalition.
Yeah, anybody who's interested, individuals, businesses, anybody we can get to say, "Hey, it's okay, it's the way we feed our babies." We're trying to normalize it and make it an important part of every infant's health. So, I think it's a pretty important thing. We're encouraging everybody to get involved, anytime, anywhere, it's all good.
Okay, no public hearing. Next up is Report of Officers. Charter, Uniform Video Services Franchise Act. So, you, Bill?
That's me. I'm gonna bounce around a little bit here, read a couple of things to you, just so you have the background of this particular act, and then ultimately, council will make whatever decision it feels is appropriate regarding a franchise fee. Our current agreement with Charter expires this year, and it was a 10-year agreement that was... Although it wasn't officially executed until 2008, it initially came to the city in 2007, which was consistent with other municipalities getting similar agreements across the state. And what Public Act 480 at least intended to do originally was to open up the market on cable service providers and to make it not only more competitive, but also hopefully more price conscious and that people would get better service. And service would be available to every segment of every community versus just certain segments that cable companies wanted to target, okay? And the first thing I want to read to you is just a part of an op-ed that appeared in the Detroit Free Press back in August of 2009, which was about three years into this legislation. And it says the following, "Just before Christmas in 2006, in the dying days of a lame duck session, the Michigan Legislature passed a law that dramatically reduced government regulation of cable TV in this state. Written largely to the specifications of AT&amp;T, which won it on Michigan's lucrative cable market, and also had made generous campaign contributions to incumbent Michigan legislators in both parties in the previous two elections, Public Act 480 stripped local governments of their authority to negotiate the terms of cable service in their community. In place of local regulation, legislatures... The legislator, excuse me, legislature established a new one-size-fits-all franchise agreement that allowed AT&amp;T to challenge Michigan's dominant cable provider Comcast in markets across the state. AT&amp;T said its freedom to offer cable services without having to meet conditions imposed by hundreds of different cities and townships would quickly transform Michigan's video landscape, bringing cable customers lower rates and improved service." Three years later, the reality is much different and nothing really changed, except rates continued to go up. And frankly, from the research I've done in 2017, we're still kind of in that same boat. Rates... Cable rates have consistently climbed, and although this act initially envisioned the Michigan Public Service getting... Michigan Public Service Commission getting involved in keeping rates down and requiring the cable companies to provide access, better access, to respond to customer complaints more quickly, it just doesn't seem in reality that that's happened. But we're to the point where our agreement's up again, and one of the things that we could do with this agreement is require Charter to charge a franchise fee up to 5% to the customers that receive services here in the City of Alpena from Charter. One of the benefits of that fee, at least as envisioned in that public act when it was passed at the end of 2006, was it would help with PEG channels. We had a PEG channel at the time, and when the city consulted its legal counsel that handled this original agreement back in 2008, part of that agreement provided that they would help keep the PEG channel going and provide service in that regard, provide oversight, provide administrative assistance, technical assistance. We no longer have a PEG channel, so you know, we really don't get that from Charter, even though they agreed by virtue of the agreement to provide that. So, where council's left with today is a decision about whether you want to charge a franchise fee to the customers. Historically, there really is no good information that we have in the records that show why the original agreement provided for a 0% franchise fee. But I'm guessing that that part of it was at least related to... The council at that time may have felt that, you know, putting another fee on top of rising cable fees is probably not something that the community would support. So, I think we're kind of in that same position again today, because it almost operates as an additional tax on folks. And I'm not sure that that service is gonna be any different by adding that fee on or not. But the law does allow that. The State of Michigan does have these standard agreements, so these agreements are signed throughout the state by municipalities and townships alike. Obviously, some have PEG channels, so some get the benefit of having the PEG channels and having some additional funds available to not only continue operating those, but to expand those. And then also, it is a revenue source. Cities and municipalities use it to help fund programs. So, it is something that we can do. The way it works, there's kind of a default provision, so if you don't put a franchise fee in there, it defaults to zero. So, if you just decided not to make a decision on it, it would be zero. Or you could decide to make it zero, you can decide to make it 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5. It's totally up to your discretion. The agreement otherwise is the same standard agreement that was signed back in 2007 without the PEG language, because we don't have a PEG channel currently. So, that's where it's at for today. If you have any questions, I'll be willing to answer them.
What are the... So, what are the restrictions on those funds? Let's just say, for instance, we said, "Okay, let's go with 5%." Where do those... If we don't have a PEG channel, where do those funds go? Are there restrictions on...
Yeah, it's not 100% clear where the restrictions are. The original thought was that those were going to be used primarily for those PEG channels, and that would be the benefit of doing that. They would have to be kept... They would have to be categorized in a separate fund. But there's no restriction that I've found that says they can't be used for general fund purposes overall. But they would have to be... They're paid on a quarterly basis. Charter would have to provide some proof that this was the fee that was collected and how it was collected, and that it was in fact, they were actually sending us what that actual percentage was. Though, I'm not sure how we would know that. I mean, you kind of have to base it on whatever they're gonna tell us. But I think they're initially earmarked for PEGs, but there's nothing in the statute that says you have to use it for this one specified purpose.
And that entire percentage comes back to the municipality?
Correct.
And I'm just asking so I am clear on my decision. It really depends on... I don't want anybody to get all excited that I'm crazy about the idea. Though, you said that we could do nothing, or we could set it at zero. What's the difference between the two?
There really isn't. I mean, it's just that the way that the couple of decisions that have been made since then, there was, I think, the City of Detroit challenged it at one time, took Comcast to court. I don't think Charter's been taken to court directly, but really, if you don't respond, it's zero. So, you either set it or it defaults to zero.
Is this annual? Is this an annual decision?
It's an annual charge, yeah.
But we'd have to make the decision every year?
No, once the decision is made, it would stay in there. So, this is a 10-year renewal, so you can't...
Oh, so it's 10 years?
Yeah, so if you make it 5%, it's gonna stay 5% for 10 years.
For 10 years?
Yeah, you can't change it. It's a 10-year renewal, 10-year agreement.
I guess my take would be to do nothing, or set it zero. I really don't see any logical sense in taking people's money for cable and spending it on anything we want to.
Right. We pay... They pay taxes already, and that's enough.
That's exactly the way I'm leaning as well. I'm a little... I mean, I'm not sure... I mean, 'cause sometimes when you do nothing, then you can change nothing. But if you... I do it all the time? But if you say zero, then you've said zero for the course of the 10 years. That's why I asked, 'cause I thought, "Okay, if we say zero, that's 10 years worth of zero, but if we do nothing, there's an opportunity to change that, nothing to 1 later in the event that somebody five years from now doesn't like my decision, our decision."
I mean, I would hope this... Let's assume we developed a PEG channel next year, and we went back to Charter and said, "Would you be willing to sign an amendment of this?" They would not be legally required to do so, but if they were good service partners and if they were really in the business of trying to promote local channels for local folks, I would hope that they would maybe reconsider it. But there certainly would be no legal requirement for them to undo the 0% that's been established.
Sure. Okay.
If there were any penalty? For instance, if new... Something new and wonderful comes out, we wouldn't be... No penalties?
No penalty. No. The only thing is this, it does say, just so you're aware, if other service providers come into the... If you charge a franchise fee to one, you gotta charge it to all. So, you couldn't charge zero to Charter and then charge 3% to Frontier, for example. You have to... Whatever fee is set, it's gonna have to be charged to all service providers that have a franchise in the municipality.
And Bill, did I understand you correctly, at the time in the original agreement, we did have a PEG channel 10 years ago?
We did.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm not sure exactly when that ended. I don't know... Karen, if you know off the top of your head?
Oh, boy, four or five years, maybe, more than that?
I was here, if that's any staple. So, within the last five years.
Do you prefer we set it at zero, or just didn't do anything?
Just gonna leave that up to... If anybody has a preference on it.
Personally, I'm comfortable with setting it at zero, you know? And I'm comfortable with that decision.
Maybe we set the franchise fee at 0%?
Second.
It doesn't matter.
Okay. Noack?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Wolagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Thanks, Bill. Request for Proposals, Property and Liability Insurance.
Well, it's been six years since we've had a insurance proposal for property and liability coverage. We have been with Alpena Agency, we've had a good working relationship with them, we've kept our costs pretty reasonable. We've had a few large claims, but overall, we've been pretty good. So, it's time for me to solicit for... I'm going to say three years with three one-year renewals. They say with insurance, you know, you don't wanna go out too often or people won't bid. And a lot of things change. So, three years, and then you can see if you're happy with each other, and then you can renew for three years. And that's what we did with Alpena Agency. So, I would like to get ready for that process.
So, you just need some action from us to approve the...
Yes.
I move we approve the request for proposals as presented.
Sexton?
Yes.
Wolagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Next, Karen. Next up are bids, water recycling plant boiler replacement. Rich, Sullinger?
City of Alpena solicited bids for the replacement of the digester boiler at the water recycling plant. Bid documents were sent to various firms, both local and throughout northern Michigan. The city held a pre-bid walk-through, a mandatory pre-bid walk-through, and six firms did attend that walk-through. This project has been in coordination with Mike Kielishevsky. He's kind of led the charge as far as working with the consultant to develop what work needed to be done. And Mike participated in that walk-through with them. Bids were opened on June 6th with only one bid received. That bid was from Wyancott Plumbing and Heating, an amount of $164,155. The city, based on previous estimates, has $90,000 established for this project. We contacted the contractors who had attended the pre-bid walk-through regarding their decision to not bid. All indicated work schedules and workload is the reason that they elected to not bid. Since the bid opening, Mike Kielishevsky has worked with the Spicer Group who developed the bid specifications for the project on options, deduct alternatives, et cetera, to try and reduce the project. And actually, we did... We did get deduct alternatives, including eliminating one of the two boilers and some of the controls, et cetera. And that reduced the scope... Or reduced the cost of the project along with the scope, from $164,000 now to about $131,000. I also spoke with Mike Lewinsky regarding the project, if it can be delayed or reduced in scope. As this boiler is used to heat the digester, a critical part of the treatment process, it needs to be replaced before winter. Thus, we looked at projects which we could delay to provide the funding necessary to complete this project in its entirety. The city has $120,000 in the budget for replacement of three chemical storage tanks. Since the development of the project scope for those tanks, replacement of those tanks, SUE's employees have undertaken repairs of those tanks and corrected the short-term issues. While they still need to be replaced, we can delay them until next fiscal year and commit the funding for the boiler replacements. And earlier today, Karen received an email question from Mike Noack regarding why we are so far over what we estimated. It's kind of a twofold thing. One, we scoped this project back in the spring of 2016, and at that time, we just looked at going in and replacing two boilers. Since that time, and with Mike's input and participation in that design process, we want to switch from the existing steam boiler system to a hot water boiler system. You know, the two boilers themselves are about... I think the deduct we got on the one was just over $20,000, so they're about $20,000 apiece. But changing that system from steam to hot water, removing antiquated piping and steam traps, installing a new control system which will allow for future expansions of the system, as well as remote monitoring. Plan is not staffed 24 hours a day. If we have failures of that, it will auto-alarm out to whoever is on call. And then to comply with the electrical code, all the new electrical service to the boilers had to be replaced and installed in a hard conduit system, installing new heat exchangers, and the overall complexity of the project compared to the original proposed project is they can evolve, and we never evolved the budget with it. A lot of this came down even after we were developing the budget for this fiscal year. So, with that, it's my recommendation, the city engineer, that the boiler replacement project at the water recycling plant be awarded Wyancott Plumbing and Heating, an amount of $164,155. The funding for the tanks is in the same line item, so there will not be a budget amendment required. And then Mike also today indicated that he is pursuing a rebate incentive, which we do on all of our major upgrade projects. Now, it's not gonna pay for the project, but you know, it's about $2,700, Mike?
I'm sorry.
Oh. I didn't wanna give you... You snuck up. About $2,700 in incentive savings, so...
When you changed a bit of the scope of the project, and there was a number that was like $134,000, that, but because it wasn't enough to offset down, you're just gonna stay with the original bid because of the explanation you just gave?
Yeah, we... I mean...
In a nutshell?
Yeah. If we delay one tank, one of those tank replacements we need to replace, we need to delay them all.
That's right.
Only for the simple fact, we have to take a wall out at the plant to be able to pull these tanks out, put new ones in. So, I don't wanna just do it to replace one. So, if we're gonna delay one, we'll delay all three of those tanks.
I see.
And that would free up the funding for it. Otherwise, I'd have to just delay the funding for one. So, basically, we're better off to just get this project done and complete it, and then it's...
Are you kind of assuming there's a benefit from switching from steam to hot water?
It's, A, they're high-efficiency boilers compared to the ones we have over there right now, and you're not heating it up to the point where it's boiling and going to steam, it's staying in hot water. We did the same thing at the water plant and saw a significant reduction in our fuel bills, gas bills down there. You know, right now, I couldn't tell you exactly what that number is or what we anticipate, unless... Did they crush anything for that incentive?
No, we didn't crush any numbers for that.
But it will be more cost effective.
Thank you.
The only question I've got, Rich, is on the... All the other bidders said that they were incredibly busy with the scope of work and were not able to complete that. You know, I just... I guess a comment more than anything, is there any chance that we can maybe get these projects out earlier in the year? I'm wondering why the project was delayed so much. Was it because of that developing scope of work kept changing, or...
Yeah. What happened was, is as we got into the project and dove into it more, in fact, we started off, just to try to save on engineering costs with the design assist approach, that's how we're trying to approach all the projects, to try to put more of that value into the project itself. So, as we got into the project, we found, "Oh, we got this, oh, we got this, oh, we got this." And so, the project mushroomed to a point where, as we got into this, it required more design drawings, required more background checks, and more design stuff. So, it stretched the project out to where we were at at this point in time, you know? So... So it, we were, we were attempting to get it out early. Part of that, I'll take some responsibility for because of the fact we did, I tried to do a design assist. And as we got into the project, we realized that we actually needed more engineered drawings because of the, some of the issues that we were facing within the project. And so we've worked around those, and it's just going to make the whole plan a lot more easy to finish.
Okay. And then, Rich, I believe I understood that delaying is, is not an option for us right now because the current system is down, or?
It's, it's failed. We, we would have to, I think, if I remember right, right now, the vessel itself and the boiler is, is cracked, and it's, is unusable, so.
Any other questions? Take some action?
I move we approve the boiler replacement project as presented.
Second.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Thank you, Rich, and Steve, or Mike? All right? Okay. Next up are communications and petitions, resolution number 2017-8, a resolution of support seeking alternative ways to transport crude oil and natural gas and the decommissioning of Enbridge Line 5 Pipeline under the Straits of Mackinac. Unless anyone else would like to, I'll read it. It is a bit revised from the last one. It starts out the same as I just stated. Whereas Line 5 is a set of 64-year-old pipelines that run under the Straits of Mackinac and have...
There is no safe way.
I guess my only, my main comment, and I've had the same comment before, is that I have absolutely no idea, no issue whatsoever in encouraging our legislation to look towards alternative methods. Because that's just the wisest thing to do. But if the alternative methods of the two lines that are under there are some better or way of transporting the oil under the same circumstances, which would be under, under the lake or any lake or through the straits, this basically says that that's not an option. And because it's calling for the decommissioning of Line 5, so I still have, I still have an issue with it. I, I'm having a little bit of trouble pushing towards something that I'm not convinced is the worst way to transport. I'm not saying that I know the best way, and I'm not saying that, that I know there are better ways. You can, and it's, and I understand there's a lot of passion and emotion behind this whole movement. I've met with several people and groups over the course of the last couple of years, so I get that. I'm not saying I don't get it. But, but the perspective of someone that's concerned with the Great Lakes and the Straits of Mackinac, we can't compare those, it's difficult for me or maybe anybody to compare that to somebody that has the same passion for our roads and the fact that they're falling apart and we've got too many trucks on our roads already. Or somebody that's going to be traveling in and out of town, and all they're, all they're dealing with constantly when they're traveling are oil trucks. Or, or oil spills on land, which is, I don't, I don't and cannot fault Susan for feeling that way just as strongly as someone feels for the Great Lakes. It's not our place, or my place, to determine who feels stronger or who's right, the lake people or the land people, so to speak. So that's where, that's where I'm at. And so I'm not necessarily personally feel responsible to pressure our government to find something that they might just do to appease that may or may not be the best resolution to Line 5. That's where I'm at. And that's probably where I'm going to be. I'm sorry, no, I'm not going to take any comments from them. We're just going to discuss this amongst ourselves.
Well, and I, I would agree. I don't think anybody here is qualified to say what the best mode of transport is. Although I can say that running a crude oil pipeline underneath a fresh water source is, I'll not swear, is a stupid idea in the first place. So I'm sure there's better alternatives, that smarter people than I can come up with. I don't know why that was ever an option in the first place. So certainly think that the history of the pipelines, contaminating water sources is pretty prevalent in this nation, and being to have crude pumped underneath a fresh water source, to me, certainly needs to end. So I'm happy to push the government on this, and I certainly support it.
I feel the same way, and I move we adopt resolution 2017-08.
Second.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
No.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Very good. Thank you. Next up are the People of, the People for Social Justice and the Action Group of Northeast Michigan, support of the Paris Climate Agreement. And we have a presentation.
Hi, I've been here before. Do I need to state my name and address again? Christina Gutaci, 417 South Second Avenue, Alpena. Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. Thank you for putting this issue on the agenda. I really appreciate that the council is allocating time to consider Alpena's commitment to addressing climate change. And I'll be brief with some comments on how our city could approach this, as other cities have done, in a way that is not only beneficial for the environment, but also has an economic driver for businesses in our local economy. I'm an active member of two, the two community groups that you mentioned, and membership, across the membership, this withdrawal of the US government from our leadership role in addressing climate change is of huge concern. I'm here today with the support of many of those two groups and asking that our city join the now 365 climate mayors in their public commitment to adopt, honor, and uphold the Paris Climate Agreement goals. After some research and phone calls, on July 28th, I provided you with a sample resolution language from the city of San Antonio, Texas, along with a restatement of some of the important points to note about the goals of the Paris Climate Agreement, which for expediency, I won't repeat here now. But I'll reiterate what I stated in my comments back on June 19th, how urgent it is that as a community and a city, we have a sustainability plan. The more than four decades-long Ground Trout Festival, the underwater preserve, the local retail and restaurants that benefit from tourists who visit our beautiful shores are all engines of our economy that rely on the health of our environment and beautiful Lake Huron. I'll take that a step further and describe to you the experience I had as a business owner in a city that proactively engaged the business community in a sustainability initiative. I owned and operated apparel, an apparel and accessories business with e-commerce and two brick-and-mortar storefronts in the cities of Columbus and Cincinnati, Ohio. In 2008, the city of Columbus rolled out the Green Spot Program as a partnership with local businesses and community groups. It was a program that increased the amount of stakeholders and engaged them in maintaining a healthy environment, so they weren't doing it on their own. As a retailer during that historic recession, I can tell you that I was open to any low or no-cost ideas that could help boost recognition for my business. The Columbus Green Spot Program did that and was free, except for the time that I spent deciding what environmentally friendly changes I would make to my operations. Some of those changes were de-emphasizing shopping bags. I stopped ordering expensive fancy custom-printed bags and instead produced branded cotton recyclable totes for purchase while still offering customers a shopping bag made from recycled paper stock. We changed our storefront lighting to energy-efficient LED bulbs. We began recycling shipping boxes that we use to ship web orders. We stopped buying individual-sized plastic water bottles for staff and customers and instead used a filtered water dispenser. My business was already employing a small design staff to produce the private-label portion of our inventory, but we shifted their production calendar so that that same staff could begin upcycling overstocks and damaged inventory. And we turned those, those items into seasonal one-of-a-kind collections that then became an exclusive driver of free press and foot traffic into my storefronts. With those micro-level changes, my business was not only able to survive the recession, but I cut my operating costs by 15% with the free publicity I gained, and I gained countless revenue increases year over year. That was just my business. The Columbus, Ohio Green Spot Program has more than 17,000 members. The improvements in the bottom line that I saw correspond to those experienced nationally on a more macro level by large companies like DuPont, GE, Walmart. After making operational investments in energy-efficient equipment like lighting and hybrid or electric vehicles, it's counterintuitive, because many of these changes cost more upfront, but the savings of energy efficiency are noticeable within a fiscal year. And there's environmental stewardship happening already in businesses that are, could be stakeholders here in, in an Alpena citywide initiative. And they could be encouraged to, to use those to promote their businesses, but also to track progress, which is thereby contributing to one of the requirements of the Paris Climate Agreement goals. The benefit to the city of Alpena making a public commitment to climate action with continued support of the Paris Climate Agreement goals is that it sustains a culture of conservation and responsibility for our community that is so fortunate to occupy this little piece of heaven on Lake Huron's shore. And that feels good, because it is good. But this kind of environmental stewardship has also proven, as I've experienced, that it grows business, it grows the economy, and it creates jobs. This is the right thing to do for the environment, but there's no question that it's also great for our local economy. And I thank you for your time listening to my comments. I ask that you use the resolution language that I've provided as a guide to draft one specific to Alpena, so that we can join those other cities in upholding the goals of the Paris Climate Agreement.
Thank you, Christine. I've been going first on that now. Feel my thunder?
Be your guest.
We do a lot of these things now. Obviously, Rich just, just spoke of one just now. We do, we've changed out a lot of the city lighting and things of that nature, so, and I, and I think our drive is, I think our drive is right, the way that we do it. Even recycling program, there's always a little bit of, there's always a little bit of controversy when it comes to recycling as far as, does it cost just as much of a footprint overall to recycle something than it did to just make a new one and things of that nature? But not that I have that, not that I have that, that attitude, but, but those type of things come up. But I feel like as a community, as in a municipality, we do quite a bit. We do our part. We're very cognizant of the stewardship of the Great Lakes and our river. With that said, I'm not convinced by the science behind global warming. And you could probably find a scientist of the same stature that will argue to the point of, the argument of the scientist with his exact education will argue that he is wrong. So if there are two scientists that are arguing about the same thing, and, and the temperature of the earth and things of that, I'm just, I'm not convinced in it. And so I have absolutely no issue whatsoever with the city's stewardship to the Great Lakes and our natural resources. Not, not convinced that the Paris Agreement is right for our country, and I don't even, I can't even specifically say that I've read the entire Paris Agreement. I'm willing to, if we're going to put this up for a vote at some time, if someone's going to rewrite the resolution, or if council would like to, if I get the impression that we're going to, I would like the opportunity to know more about what I'm voting the city of Alpena into. That's my take.
So I agree with the mayor, the city is, is overall pretty responsible. Certainly, the city can do more, we can do more as individuals, and the business community can do more. Without having a global warming debate, I guess I would beg to differ, that we do have a serious impact on the environment. We've had several once-in-a-thousand-years occurrences in just the last year, more than we've had before that. And I don't, I don't think it's one scientist versus another, that the overwhelming opinion that the scientific community is, that we have an effect on the environment. Certainly, I would be supportive of this. I don't know what kind of impact it really makes for the federal government, but certainly have enough cities band together, we can at least send a message, and if anything, hold our, hold ourselves accountable. So I, I would be happy to direct staff to write a resolution that's similar to the one presented.
I agree with the mayor. I'm, I'm not convinced that the Paris Agreement is right, is completely right. I don't believe it's all wrong. I think we are all committed, should all be committed, to doing the very best we can with what we have to work with and taking care of our city. And I believe, for the most part, we do that. Is it perfect? No. But I believe that we're doing a good job now, and we can progress to doing more.
One of the biggest concerns I had about this particular proposal off the bat was, as you can see, this is a pretty partisan issue. It's been a very partisan issue in our country. And one of the things that, you know, I'd like to relate to the board and just for consideration too, is that this is a nonpartisan board. There's issues like this that normally we, we stay away from, you know, just because it's, it's very partisan, there's sides of both, both of the issue. And I think, if you know me personally and you know where I land, I'm a very strong environmental person. I don't know enough about the Paris Accords to say this is right for us, or it's going to box us in into a place that down the road could hurt us. So I don't have a problem with, if we're going to do a resolution, as Councilman Sexton suggested, you know, that I definitely started that work. I wouldn't have a problem with tabling this for a while, so I can do more research and to understand exactly what I'm voting for, have some research from city attorney, just to see, you know, exactly how it would impact us. So I'm, I'm in favor at least getting that information.
I would have no issue signing this. But if you want to table the issue, take a motion, we do that until you feel comfortable putting it back on the agenda?
I appreciate that, so I move we table this issue until, for the research can be done, and we gain an opinion from the city attorney.
Second.
Now, if you're directing the city attorney to do legwork, that's part of your motion for him to do legwork and bring it back to council? Yes. The impact of the Paris Accord on the city is what I'm asking specifically about.
And it would probably be a postpone rather than a table, because a table, we have to bring back at the next meeting, and I don't know that you're going to be ready.
Okay.
Okay.
I would...
Postpone it then?
I would move for a postpone.
Okay.
Whoever second that is.
Noah and Johnson, yeah, okay. An impact was on, for, for Bill? Impact on us, the city?
Yes.
Okay. Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you all. Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming and presenting. We appreciate that. Unfinished business tonight is the downtown Second Avenue On Street parking between Chisholm and River Street. Rich Solinger is logging in.
At the previous city council meeting, an option was presented to the council to modify the on-street parking on Second Avenue between Chisholm and River Street to accommodate two-way traffic, on-street parking on each side. What this basically did was it brought our lane widths down to 11 feet, our parking... What this basically did was it brought our lane widths down to eleven feet, our parking stall widths down to seven feet, which is the minimum legal standard that exists that both Steve and I independently did research on and determined that those were the minimum standards.
It's not ten?
Excuse me.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I had, I had made a, I had made mention in a prior email that ten was actually the minimum, and we were going with eleven.
I think you can, you can use ten, but not on a major street that is, has the traffic volumes that we do.
Oh.
You can, you can throttle on a ten-foot lane, but it's not on a major street that has traffic volumes.
Okay.
That's, I guess that's, it is an option, but not in this particular case.
Not on this street.
Yeah. Okay. What this does, it does increase the parking beyond what we had originally envisioned. The proposal, as was approved by city council, was for two-way traffic with only parking on the south side of Second Avenue. There would be no parking on the north side. This slide, the top, top slide is as it exists, bottom slide is as proposed, as was proposed at the last council meeting. So at this point, you know, it's council's decision, council's solicited input from business owners, prosecutors, et cetera.
Can I start this off? Because I had talked to staff last week about setting up the street with parking on both sides and traffic going both ways, so that people could see how it looks, including myself. Some of the business owners had requested that. We did try to do that, but it didn't. We were going to try to do it for Sunday. That kind of fell through. Rich went on vacation, Greg went on vacation. Greg suggested that I ask council to table this so that we can do it before next meeting, and it would not change them beginning work after Labor Day. But it would give the business owners and any council members or public a chance to see what the street would actually look like, so that you can see it with your own eyes. So I'm asking that we do that.
Are you asking that council observe it, say, on Sunday night late? Or are you asking that citizens be able to drive on it so they can see what it's like?
No. With the help of DPW and the police department, they will put cars on that street. They will close it off, put cars on that street, move them about. People will park under their direction.
Okay.
And Gentry can send out an email to all the business owners in the DDA, and they can come and observe. We can come. Anybody who wants to come and see it can come and see it.
Okay. I misunderstood your first statement.
But that's what I'm asking.
Under a controlled environment.
Right.
For a very, what I would assume would be a short period of time.
We, we talked about it with police. Police was very responsive. We just couldn't get everything coordinated and intact to make it happen. But they would basically block it off at Chisholm Street, block it off at River Street, allow us to park cars as if it was two-way traffic on each side, and then get a couple of cars and put them right next to each other in between those, so that you, so that people can get an idea of what it's going to look like, et cetera. The intention was not to set it up so people could drive through it, because we just don't have enough maneuvering room to do that.
And you would do that with, like, tape or something?
Yeah. We could, we would go through there and we put temporary pavement markings down, just the tape that we use, and that way they can see. I don't want to put cones in there because those are going to be distracting to...
Point of cones.
Everybody's going to steer away from those, so, you know, we could put, we could put temporary tape down and just see if it was functional, if people felt it was functional.
How, I get, I'm not opposed to it whatsoever. As a matter of fact, Cindy and I had a little bit of email traffic about that this weekend. Greg had mentioned that they had tried to do that, but actually blamed it on your vacations.
That's okay.
Not the police department.
He's not here. You can blame it on him.
I don't have an issue with it, and we were told before that we do have until the second meeting at the latest to make this decision. Second meeting in August before we would have to, have to make a decision. I just, I just wanted to get a couple of clarity items as far as, I guess, just looking at it, and I won't ask you to answer now because you may, you may not know, but when you're designing what we're going to do, we can't, if we don't close down US 23, I guess the vehicles will have to go through there and then turn around somewhere and come back in order for them to, to like turn with the new stripes and obviously not just bottleneck up against something. But, yeah, I'm not opposed to it whatsoever. It's fine.
Can you close US 23?
We wouldn't close 23.
Okay.
We would block it off, block off Second Avenue at 23.
I see.
Yeah, they, we're not going to be able to drive through there, have people drive through there. All we can do is stage a couple of cars in there to see what it physically looks like.
I think that's fine.
You're welcome to use my suburban.
I was going to say, I'm a part for you.
It sounds like a good idea. Might give us better perspective.
I'm not opposed to it. I think that's, you know, everyone's goal appears to make sure that that is, you know...
It's a good idea.
...everything else. I'd like to coordinate it for, for next Sunday, if that, Sunday is the chosen day in the evening, obviously, at least.
We look at it somewhere in that 5:30 to 6:30 range, only because, I mean, we're going to impact somebody, you know, potentially the restaurants, scoops, et cetera. We're going to impact those folks, but...
Not if a lot of people come.
Yeah. Didn't do that.
I'm sorry. I don't know.
Might be a party.
Just threw that out there. I guess I would recommend that we do our best to try and schedule it for the 13th rather than the 20th, because the 20th is right before our meeting, and we might, we'll be able to have that week's worth of opportunity to digest what we just saw.
13th of August, do we have a 5:30?
5:30, 6:00.
We will coordinate, get a notice out to council and to Ann, and then Ann can coordinate with the downtown business owners that we are going to be doing that. And we, and Ann and I have talked about that.
I figured so, yeah. So you would be able to, you'd be able to send us out an email?
Yes.
By sometime tomorrow? Just, I guess with the, with the date and time and at least some...
And just, you know, I just want to check with, with police and with my staff to make sure, because I want my staff there to be able to lay it out.
I understand. Yeah. So just so we're, just so we're ahead of it enough to give enough notice, because tomorrow's Tuesday already.
I will, I will do my best to let you know about it.
Sounds fine.
Karen, do you need a little table action from us?
Yes.
I move that we table the...
And we don't want to hear from any business owners. I just wanted to throw that out there before we got too deep, but I'm more than willing to listen to if other people have things to say.
At what point?
Now.
Oh, no?
No? Okay.
Well, no, public comment was public comment. I don't want to, I don't want to invite public comment again on this particular topic. Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
We generally steer away from that. But if anybody came here specifically for the two-way and they have something that they would like to comment to council, please come again in two weeks. It sounds like that's when we were going to definitely make our decision as to what proposal or action that we're going to take in your, in your action. Just, I was just going to hesitate that you don't state the date and time that we do it in your, just that we're tabling it, and then we'll just establish that throughout the week.
So, yeah.
So we did that.
Okay.
You got that. Yes.
Did somebody second that?
I'll second.
Okay. Nowak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Holagura?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
I move we adjourn to close session to discuss water and sewer litigation.
Second. Sexton?
Yes.
Holagura?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Nowak?
Yes.